Okay. Good evening. First, we need to adjourn closed session. Do you have a motion?
So moved second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we are reconvening open session at 7:13 PM. Tonight, we have a full school board meeting, but first, let's have Morris Elementary School, fifth grade student Stephanie Garcia from teacher Mrs. Nina Serna's class lead us in the pledge.
Please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to our amigas and, oh, no. Thank you to our amigas and amigos, parents, guardians, and principal Sylvia Braggs and staff for attending and supporting our talented students. That was absolutely wonderful. Let's give them another hand.
It doesn't get any better.
No, that's why we're here.
Okay. Do we have a report out of closed session?
Yes, we do. We have three. First one, the Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Lance Riley as elementary assistant principal. The roll call vote was unanimous. The Board of Education also accepted the administrative appointment of Emily Dominguez as elementary assistant principal. The roll call vote was unanimous. And lastly, the Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Rio MacGyver Gibbs as the lead personnel agent. The roll call vote was unanimous. That is it.
Okay. Now need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved second.
And a preferential vote by our student, board member?
Aye.
And vote by board members?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we move on to presentations. Rialto 2016. We probably need to close that door. Rialto 2016 Summer Bridge to Success Program presentation by Lavina Beckley Knight, CEO of MHM and Associates and Officer Javier Polito, Rialto Police Department.
We'd like to welcome our mayor here tonight.
All, and welcome Mayor Robertson.
Thank you, thank you. Oh, I would like to just briefly say good evening and thank you for the opportunity to do a brief introduction. First and foremost, I would like to congratulate you on meeting this milestone of 125th anniversary of providing education to our community. So you really should be commended for that. Your services to our community is even longer than our incorporation within our city. And I do apologize that I wasn't able to be in attendance, but I know Mayor Pro Tem Baca Junior was here to represent us. Did have an economic development committee meeting. And it ran way beyond what we expected. But now I'm here along with the team so that I can hopefully give you some of the highlights of what has happened this past summer. And I think it goes without saying, you're going to hear a very awesome presentation. You're going to hear testimonies from people, parents, kids who are involved and participated in the program. We had a wonderful graduation. Thank you very much for the use of the Carter facility. And then I also just want to know that, let everyone know, those are in the audience, that a lot of you know Officer Polito, but Officer Polito happens to be the official rock star of the city of Rialto. So much so that he's the only one that holds the certificate of being a true rock star. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Officer Polito and/or Mrs. Lavina Beckley Knight, who is with MHM and Associates and who is our lead consultant on this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I am not the rock star, but I'd like to first thank Superintendent Avila for letting us be here today. We're really here to make sure we emphasize the fact that we're in this together. And when you see what we've done, the city of Rialto, the Rialto Police Department, community services, community-based organizations, we just think it's worth our time and hopefully yours to share some of the successes. So to do that, we've asked some of the parents and some of the students and Officer Polito to come up and give you some of the highlights of the program. And to do that, first, I want to introduce one of your former teachers from Eisenhower High School, Beverly Powell. Beverly served as our project liaison, working with a lot of the principals, working with Officer Javier Polito, in making sure we all work collectively in bringing out some program impacts. But having said that, and Beverly didn't come up, or, okay, so I'll have Beverly Powell kind of come and give some introductions as to who's speaking next, so thank you.
Very, very briefly, but we do want to share with you the impact that this summer program and through the school year has, has had on the participants, students and parents. So very quickly, I'm going to introduce two of the students that have participated, Angelica Gonzalez and Eric Zuniga. And Mrs. Gonzalez, Ruth Gonzalez, is also going to speak. And they'll just tell you just briefly about the impact this program has had. And then after that, we'll turn it over to Officer Polito, our rock star, who will actually, who will talk about what, I mean, what he's done to this, for this program, and how it's truly a partnership with the Rialto Police Department, the city, community-based organizations, and the school, and the school district itself. Okay? Angelica, let's start with you. And Angelica will share with us just what the program has meant to her.
Good evening. My name is Angelica Gonzalez. What I liked about the program was that they never gave up on us. They showed us respect, leadership skills, and I would like to thank Officer Polito for taking the time out of his day to make sure that all of us were taken care of and made sure that all of us were acting respectful towards our parents and towards our fellow cadets.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Eric. Mr. Eric Zuniga, also one of the students in Rialto School District.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Eric Zuniga. What I liked about this program was that it taught me how to respect not just my parents, but other people around me. And I'd like to thank Officer Polito for taking his time away from his family members to get us straight and not being mean to other people. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, this is also a program that had much input and impact on the parents. And so I want to share with you one of your own. This is Ruth Gonzalez, who actually works at Beavis Elementary School. So Mrs. Gonzalez will share with you how this program has actually affected her family. And her daughter is Angelica, who you just heard from.
Good evening, President O'Kelly, board members, and Superintendent Dr. Avila. My name is Ruth Gonzalez, and I'm the proud parent of cadet Angelica Gonzalez. I'm thankful to stand before you and share my daughter's story. Angelica has always been an outgoing and happy person. She's always been a model child until last year on September 1st, when one of her best friends passed away. Many nights after that day, I would walk by her room where she sat in the dark, and I would listen to her cry. Many nights, I sat there with her and cried myself. She lost a piece of her heart and didn't know how to move forward. She shut down on me and wouldn't do her work. She wouldn't listen. She was angry and didn't understand why her best friend was gone. Then she was presented with the opportunity by Officer Polito to be in this program. She volunteered, and we as a family supported her. The first weekend, they left on a three-day hiking trip. And when they came back, she not only came back smelling of body odor, she came back and she told me about herself. That night, she sat me down and talked to me about how she didn't like who she had become. She wanted to be a better person, and she realized she once again felt confidence in herself. She and we as a family have grown so much these past 12 weeks. She started this school year with the end in mind. She is in all advanced honors classes and is working hard with ASB at Rialto Middle School. I know that Angelica is not the only cadet that has been positively impacted with this program. I too have learned so much on how to seek first to understand my child, then to be understood, and that I also have to strive daily to set an example of what I want her to be, because I have to teach her to do as I do so that she can do as I say. The traditional African proverb states that it takes a village to raise a child, and I firmly believe this is true. The Summer Bridge program is an excellent example of the proverb in that they have successfully bridged the community, families, and police department to help these cadets succeed. Life is not an easy journey. There are going to be several bumps along the road. But I'm thankful that this program has taught these cadets the discipline and leadership skills to handle tough situations, has helped guide them to set goals and follow through with them, and has taught them to believe in themselves and to also give back to the community. There aren't enough words to express my gratitude, gratitude, I'm sorry, to everyone who has made this program possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. Officer Polito will now speak. Javier Polito is absolutely one of Rialto's finest. You won't hear him brag and boast about himself, but honestly, these kids just gravitate toward him like, like I said, like, or Mayor Robertson said, like he's a rock star. But again, they know that he cares about them. And this is the kind of person that is in your schools, working with your students throughout the school year, and I'm going to introduce him to you. And again, you will feel just as proud of him as we are. Okay, Officer Zuniga.
Good evening, everybody. President O'Kelly, Vice President Walker, members of the board, Superintendent Avila. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'd like to thank Principal MacGyver Gibbs, most importantly, for allowing us to use her campus for the summer. We called it our home. So it was really great to be able to be somewhere local, somewhere centralized where we can identify and be able to successfully carry out our program. I was presented with this opportunity a couple of years ago to program coordinate the Summer Bridge and the E3P3 grant, and trying to come up with different ideas, and we kind of collaborated that there needs to be an in-school program along with the summer program and a families component. I like, I'm very proud to say that in the year and a half that this program's been going, we've been allowed with open arms into the campuses. And I appreciate the partnership that the police department and the school has developed with everything that's going on. And everybody talks, all these agencies talk about building community partnership and how do we make it better. I think Rialto, the city of Rialto, the Rialto Police Department, and the Rialto Unified School District are the front runners when you look at what we're doing. What we're offering here, the partnerships that we have, you don't see in San Bernardino, you don't see in Fontana, Colton, Riverside, you know, it's here in Rialto. And in our summer program, I open it up to everybody. So we service all the youth in Rialto, but I have kids from the high desert, I got kids from Riverside County, all the way from Coachella coming here because they've heard of this program that we offer for free. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here, to be part of the program, to be a mentor, to be a teacher. All the youth here can, I'll be here for them as long as I'm allowed. And I like to say that I could probably never work undercover again, because I'm probably going to get recognized like, hey, you're a cop, dude. You know, so, no, I'm not going to sell you drugs. All right? So, but that's good. That's good, because, you know, we want to make sure that our, that we have a positive relationship with our youth. So I thank you for the opportunity. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
And just real, real briefly in closing, I just want to go over some of the highlights in a PowerPoint presentation. And before I do, just real quick, there's one other, I guess, you know, we typically hear the cliche, behind every great man, there's a good woman, right? But behind Officer Polito, there's another great man, which is also a part of the Rialto Unified School District, and that's Gordon Leary, who's our, who's a security, who's over, Gordon, yeah, chief, Gordon Leary, who's worked with Officer Polito, there he is, to make things happen. So thank you, Mr. Leary, for being there for us as well. So we had the Rialto E3P3 Gang Intervention Program. And as a summary of the E3P3 program, Mayor Robertson is one of the first E3P3 cities, which means she's focusing on, or the city's focusing on, increasing access as it relates to environmental issues as it relates to where kids learn, live, and play, economic issues as it relates to youth understanding and building financial literacy, and equity as it relates to their access to quality education. And so when, and I can't move, so here we go. Does it work? Yeah. So what we did, we identified four benchmarks, and in one year, in the GREAT program, which is Gang Reduction, Education, and Training Program, we were able to exceed in the classroom meeting 1,200 or educating 1,200 students on the GREAT program. Our target for parents, which is our parent education program, which lasts over 12, oh, sorry, 12 weeks, we targeted 50 parents. We had actually 82 parents from the city of Rialto engaged in the program. We targeted 50 youth to participate in our summer program. We had 65, and we had a waiting list. We actually had to cut off the list, and we couldn't take anymore. And what I will leave with President O'Kelly and as well as yourself, Superintendent Avila, is a evaluation, which I'll highlight some of the program impacts that we've had. But I want to highlight, if you can see this, that the seven areas that we focused on were overall risk resilience, their ability to adopt social attitude, or ability to adopt behaviors that demonstrated positive social attitude. We wanted to focus on their decision-making skills, their ability to address anger and violent situations in a way that resulted in positive outcomes, as well as safety in school and in the home, and obviously drug resistance. And if you can see, when we started off with our baseline data, we had a couple of Cs along the way as it relates to making good decisions, B minuses, C plus. But if you look towards the third and fourth column, you'll see where we were all at Bs and As. And what that tells us is in a year and a half, we're beginning to see these youth become resilient, and there's three areas we're focusing on, resilient, empowered, and directed. We're beginning to see in this short year and a half that we're experiencing some positive outcomes as it relates to those areas. One of the youth, and you'll see on the right side, it's when they came back from the camp, they said, "We were strict, but I like that because they were trying to make us better." And another student said, "Drill weekend was by far the hardest thing in my life, but I came home a better man." And so those are the type of statements we're really excited about, that these youth are walking away with, as you heard from the youth today. Here's just some pictures. We took them to NASA, they were able to go to, in Pasadena, we took them on the, on a bus, a bus that was so nice, I don't think I've ever been on a bus, in a luxury bus, I think it was called, where they had lush plush seats, and I don't think they, you had trouble getting them off the bus when they got back, right? So, but you can just see some of the activities. We took them away, they were in the classroom. There's five community-based organizations that are also associated with this program, Youth Action Project, Joseph Williams, the Black Voice Foundation, Hardy Brown, you have the Bethune Center with Beverly Powell, and you also have, who am I missing? Young Visionaries, which is Terrance Stone. So the measured outcomes, what we were able to do, we were able to show with this program in a year and a half, that we were able to improve the youth relationship with law enforcement. So we're all aware of the issues that we're dealing with, as it starts, Black Lives Ladders, Police Matters, or Police Matter. All of those issues, still, in the midst of that, we were able to improve youth relationship as it relates to law enforcement. We're able to enhance youth resiliency, their leadership and communication skills, reduce their interest in participating in gangs, and create a framework for a sustainable gang intervention model, which is our program in its entirety. Our long-term goals, which is why we're here, we're wanting to really engage the school district to be a part of our long-term goals as well, is increase the percentage of youth that can participate in the program. We want to increase the percentage of youth avoiding the violent behaviors that, or delinquent behaviors, and we still want to have some significant impact on the number of youth that avoid criminal or deviant activities. And also those that are demonstrating positive youth development activities. One of the things we emphasize is Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens, and you kind of hear that in their speech, you know, beginning with the end in mind, first things first, and first seek to be understood and then to understand. So there's these, there's these constant reiteration of behaviors that will increase positive youth development activities among the youth. So the school district's support will enable us to continue this program. Right now, this program runs, costs $1.2 million for us to have the in-school GREAT program, to have the summer program, to bridge the success parent program, which now will, next year include men. We will have a specific class for male engagement for parents that are fathers of children within the Rialto district, as well as increasing engagement of African-American students. As you may have noticed, or may not have noticed, we looked at our data, we had less than a 3% involvement of African-American youth in our program, and so we want to have a concerted effort engaging that population, just based on the level of impact and some of the demographics that we're seeing, and the risk factors that those youth are being faced with. And so we're looking to make sure we increase their, the engagement. So you'll see that we want to go forward, we want to have, increase our enrollment from 300 to 600 over the school year, or during the school year. We want to go from 40 kids enrolled for 14 weeks. We want to have 25 additional parents enrolled, and we want to increase the number of classrooms that we're able to expand the GREAT program in during the school year. And that's just showing you the cost of the program. We don't have to go there. But one of the things I want, I think that's the key activities, upcoming events, we will have a symposium in November, which you will be invited to, where we'll highlight in detail the program. We'll have think tanks, where these youth will share with us, as well as with you, as to what they would like to see happen, as well as we'll do a debriefing of program with all the community leaders and the community-based organizations as to what we would like to see going forward, not only in the next school year, but the years to come. So those are just upcoming events, I want, we want you to be aware of, that you will get notices and information on. But in closing, I guess, and that's it, I don't know if there's any questions or comments or thoughts regarding the presentation, but the main thing is, we wanted you to know that we truly are in need of the continuation of this program. And we would love to continue to work with yourself and staff in moving this forward in a way that allows us to meet our match. One of the things I didn't mention, the Board of State of Community Correction was the initial funder of this project. We now have the responsibility, which they told us when they funded us, of substantiating a match. So for every dollar they grant us, we have to have matching funds. And so part of our continuing conversation and dialogue with you would be on substantiating how we can make that happen for the 2017, 2018 school year. So, questions, comments, thoughts, and?
Question. Up to what amount? $1.2 million matching fund?
Yes, it's a dollar-for-dollar match, yes.
Okay, I didn't know if we went double that, whether they'd match that.
Right, there you go. Well, and it's all a matter, so right now, what we're working on, before we go back to the table and ask for their, their funds, is to substantiate what we're able to secure locally. We will be working with foundations, we're asking the California CETF to come down and Emergent Technology Fund to come down and consider supporting our project as well. So the school district will not be the only one contributing towards that $1.2 million, but we're definitely hoping that we can get some contribution and support to keep this program going.
Thank you very much. Excellent program.
Thank you for saying that. We so appreciate all the work that's being done.
Ms. Walker? I just wanted to comment, because I was able to come to the opening of the Bridge of the program this summer, and I was just really surprised to see, I'm saying surprised because I saw kids working and doing their workshops and everything, but on the right of the room, I saw maybe about 20 or 30 parents engaged in workshops. And so that was my surprise. On a Saturday, great day, you know, they could be out shopping while, you know, you drive the kid, kick him out, you know, and everything, drive off, and pick him back up when it's time, when the program's over. So that was very encouraging and exciting about the, just the feedback, even the few parents that I did talk to that day. So I'm excited about what you guys are doing there, on the fact that it is a community and educational partnership and governmental partnership. So just the involvement of the resources to be able to make things happen. So I was really excited about it, doubly excited, because it happened in our school district. So yay, Rialto, where's Ria? Yay, Ria! And everything. And so hopefully, we can look to find out, figure out a way that we can continue to support in some kind of way from our district as well.
Thank you.
Because I'd love to see more Rialto students take advantage of it.
Thank you, Ms. Walker, yes. And I appreciate your saying that. And thank you for coming and supporting us as well.
Are there any other questions?
Just a comment.
Okay.
Just want to thank you for all that you've done. I know it takes a full team to make great things happen, but I do want to commend Officer Polito for every Paredo for everything that he does. He is a rock star of rock stars.
Aww.
And I want to personally thank you for all that you do for the youth in our community. Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you all. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you all.
Okay, we move on with comments. Do we have public comments from the floor, Dr. Avila?
We do.
Oh, I'm sorry. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes. Do we have any?
Yes, we do, we have quite a few. First on the agenda is Ms. Paula Bailey.
Wow, how do you follow up something great like that? Good evening, President O'Kelly, Board, Superintendent Cabinet. First, I want to say, my daughter was in the GREAT program, and she loved it. She looked forward to every week when they were coming. Second of all, the other reason I'm up here, is I am part of the Rialto Unified Measure Wise Citizens Oversight Committee. And the committee consists of seven members to serve two terms, I'm sorry, to serve a term of two years without compensation, and for no more than two consecutive terms. At this present time, we have several vacant seats to fill for our Oversight Committee, and we were hopeful to see that some of you would like to serve on this committee. We need committee members that are an active business organization representing the business community located in Rialto. We also need a member who is a parent or guardian of a child enrolled in the school district with an act, and active in a parent-teacher organization, so PTA, PTO, either one, whatnot. A member in a senior citizens organization, active member, of course, and a member who is active in a bona fide taxpayer organization. So if anyone is interested and able to fill any of these roles, please contact our business office, Mr. Mohammed Islam. We'll be able to take those interests and get the applications. I do have some applications here that I can hand off to you, so that you can hand off to others if you see anyone interested. And that's it for, sorry. And last but not least, how could you not think about our Parent Summit that's coming up October 15th? I know lots of us absolutely love the Peach Star and getting those flyers. I was at a meeting at our SALPA office this morning, and we were talking about some website design stuff, and I was like, "Our district has the Peach Star, you need to, you know, link everything to the Peach Star, because there's flyers there, and it works." So, yes, I was bragging, there's only four other SALP districts there. But I've been to the Parent Summit before, it's absolutely wonderful. So if you haven't been, it's worth checking out. Every year gets better, every year's different. So, if you didn't get that Peach Star invitation, contact your school site. And that's it for me. Have a great night, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Guadalupe Sandoval.
Okay. Buenas noches, Mesa Directiva. Señor Dr. Avila, quería hacerle un comentario acerca de las secretarias, si fuese posible que tuviera una persona que hablara inglés y español.
Good evening to the board members, and especially Dr. Avila, our superintendent. I would like to make a comment or ask if you could have a secretary that speaks Spanish and English at school sites?
La experiencia que he tenido con ella es que hablé para hacer una cita con usted. Me dice que no hablaba español, me dejó esperando en línea, este, tardan unos minutos.
Okay, she called your district office trying to make an appointment, and the person that answered, the secretary that answered, did not speak Spanish, and they had her on hold for a couple of minutes, or they had me on hold for a couple of minutes.
Este, quisiera ver si fuese posible que usted tuviera su secretaria que hablara inglés y español.
Would it be possible for you to have a secretary that speaks Spanish and English?
Es todo, gracias.
That's all.
Now, we have Candy Aceguera and Nora Mendoza.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Candelaria Aceguera. Lo único que tengo una petición, este, se puede decir que grande? Al señor Avila, al doctor Avila.
Good evening to all, my name is?
Candelaria Aceguera.
Candelaria Aceguera, and I have a petition especially for Superintendent Avila.
Le quiero sugerir que por favor tome en cuenta a las familias que no hablamos inglés.
If you can please, I would like to just suggest to keep in mind families who do not speak English.
Que tome como secretaria a una persona bilingüe.
To have as a secretary, a bilingual person.
Porque no quiero dar, exponer problemas, pues al intérprete, a la secretaria, y al último llega con él.
Because I would not like to share my concerns or problems with the secretary, an interpreter, and then you.
That's all.
Buenas noches, a toda la Mesa Directiva, mi nombre es Nora Mendoza. Yo estoy aquí para pedir si la forma de la, bueno, la forma, la queja formal, si puede estar al alcance de todos los padres, ahí donde tienen en las escuelas toda la información. Por favor, porque hay muchos padres que les hacen muchos, mucho rueda para no agarrar una forma de esas.
Good evening to all. I would like to ask if there's more direct way of, or having, or more visible way of having the complaint process available to all when we, when we're in each school site in the office?
Y otra petición muy importante que quiero hacer, y que tengo cinco hijos, me quedan ya dos en el distrito, pero la he pedido por muchos años, y espero que ahora nuestro superintendente y la mesa directiva la tome más en cuenta, este, que los, las personas que tenemos empleadas en nuestras escuelas, middle school and high school, los de seguridad, sean rotados anualmente para la seguridad de todos los estudiantes, pienso yo, por los incidentes que ya han pasado anteriormente, y me encantaría que hicieran eso ahora posible.
I am a mother of five children, I have two that are still in middle school and high school, and I would like to ask, and I've asked of this before, if maybe our district's security can be rotated when, every year, for better measures of security, and because of things that have occurred.
Es todo, gracias, muy amable.
That's all, thank you.
Next, we have Dr. Ayana Balagon.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, good evening. So, I am Dr. Ayana Balagon, proud principal of Warner Elementary, woo-woo, and I'm also a proud researcher, but most of all, I'm a proud parent. This is my godbaby, her name is Tavi, and she just graduated from USC in Cinematic Arts. And I just want to send shout-outs today. Today, I'm here because I'm full of gratitude, and I hope I don't get emotional, but I am so full of gratitude, because our district has embarked upon a journey to be restorative, practice, preventative, and that's a big deal. And I thank you guys, this is, this is hard work, but you guys are taking the charge, and you're putting people in place. We have our own special heroes, we have Alma from CWA, who is McKinney-Bento Hero, I don't know if she's here tonight. But I went to a training, and Alma is on it. When we find, when she finds out our parents don't have what they need, she is there, she's like a superhero, so thank you, Alma, for that. Also, at CWA, we have Leonard, Angela, and Chief Leary, and they are doing amazing work. I want to thank Chief Leary for allowing us, well, really, the Board and Chief Leary, for allowing us to have a safety officer at our site. We've had some trouble at Warner getting things set up, and, and we've had a safety officer there, at least one. We even had an accident, one of our parents, who is here tonight, was in an accident, and our safety was on the spot. And so, I just thank you guys for being so responsive to the needs of our school. Also, I want to thank our Board and our school district for being pro-child, whole-child. We do a lot of work at the school sites, where we're dealing with broken children, broken homes, and I work in a community that has a lot of brokenness. And I want to thank you for, again, these restorative practices, allowing Dr. Sahili to come today, and also educate us on restorative justice and cultural responsive instruction, so thank you. Also, having collaborations with probation department, South Coast, and the latest Clay Counseling Solutions, which I'm so proud of. You see, Tavi, her last month of school, called me one night and was about to commit suicide. Thank God, I had someone I could call that talked her off the ledge. And so, you having someone come in, like Clay Counseling Solutions, and offer that for our kids, in addition to what they already have, because I love my counselors, they're doing a wonderful job here in Rialto, but they can't do the work that we need them to do when it comes to trauma therapy. They cannot. And so, I just thank you for taking the charge and putting someone like Clay Counseling Solutions, our probation department, training our classified and our safety staff with NCTI training. I did have two comment cards, so if you don't mind, I'm gonna keep going, for training them. As a principal, like I said, I deal with all those things, and so, my babies are important to me. When they're at my school, they're my babies, and if I know I can call the district and get someone over here to handle our issues, I'm thankful for you guys. Also, special shout-out for FLI Training, we went to in Vegas for training our parents, that was amazing, thank you. Also, for Dr. Avila, I spoke with you at the School-to-Prison Pipeline, woo-woo, I have the button on. He was there, he took a staff, a group of people, thank you, Board. It was amazing, Tia Martinez was there speaking on the brokenness of our children, and that was amazing. And Dr. Avila said that day that we would be starting a district-wide African-American parent advisory council, and within one week, it was happening. So thank you for being, taking initiative. Again, this social justice work is not easy, and so, when we have a district behind us supporting us in this work, I am so grateful. Without that kind of work, my Tavi wouldn't be graduated from film school. So I appreciate you guys, and I appreciate the work you do, and thank you so much for being courageous in this work.
Thank you.
Now, we have Gloria Davila.
My name is Gloria Davila. I'm a parent of Warner Elementary School. The reason I'm here, it's because I'm asking for help. I had a big accident last week in front of my school. I'm very lucky that I'm here, my children's, and myself. We couldn't be dying. We need to work together as a district, city, and parents. Please, we need to do something now. We need a light, or a stop, or something before another accident happened, and maybe they couldn't survive as we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Leslie Chambers.
Good evening, President O'Kelly, Board members, Dr. Avila. At KC Elementary School on September 9th, we had our inaugural identity fair, and I'm just here to thank so many people who came to support our students. Basically, it was an opportunity for students to share who they are with us, not just as a student, but who they are as a person, what are your passions, what makes you you. And we kicked it off by having some members of the district come, Saeda Joffrey, Leonor Harrison, John Roach, our principal, Joanna Cuellar, came and just spoke from the heart and talked about who they are, and not about what their job is, although they did share that, but also about who they are as a person, and what they love, and their hobbies. And it was amazing. And then, our students were asked to, on kind of like a science fair board, or any way they wanted to present it, to present themselves to all of us. And so, we had seven of our nine fourth and fifth grade team participate, and it was the most amazing thing. And I want to thank Saeda for coming, and Beth Curtis for coming, and John Roach for coming, and Dr. Avila for coming. And I want you to know that Dr. Avila spoke to every single child in every single classroom, and he challenged the ones that didn't like the right soccer team, and he danced with the ones, and he urged the students who were shy and didn't want to talk about themselves, he said, "You've got to present, you've got to be able to do that." And it was just, it was amazing. And I just want to thank everyone for the support that we received from our administration, Joanna Cuellar and Terry Helstad, and just the district as a whole. And this is all leading into a Genius Hour, which will be coming, and then a Genius Project, that we're hoping might even become a compassion project of some sort. But it will be decided by the child what they're going to do, what they will investigate, how they will spend their time, and how they will make their presentation, whether it's another board, or an artifact, or a PowerPoint, or if John were here, he could tell me what I should say in Google, I don't know what the term is, but something. Anyway, we're very excited about that, and we hope that maybe some of the Board could come on that day when we do our Genius Projects. And I also wanted to share that this is my 35th year in Rialto Unified School District, and I just want to thank the, no, no, no. Hey, I got applause because I'm old, yeah, that's cool. I just want to thank the Board for Dr. Avila, because after 35 years, I am more excited than I have ever been, even as a brand-new teacher. I am excited about the future of our district, I'm excited about the direction in which we're going, and I just want to thank you, and I want to thank you, Dr. Avila, for your leadership. Thank you.
Next, we have Juan Hernandez.
Good evening, my name is Juan Hernandez, I don't know, can you hear me? My name is Juan Hernandez, I am the driver trainer for the Transportation Department. I've been working for the school district for 15 years, but I bring 29 years of experience as a driver, a driver instructor, and a trainer behind the wheel. I have successfully trained about 200 people. 200 people, I supervise them to become successful bus drivers in the industry. I currently take care of about 50 drivers here at the school district. And I hold the same qualifications as my manager, Dora Parham, we're both state-certified instructors. We have cars that say we're certified by the state of California to teach class, to teach statute, regulation, teach safety. That's our main goal, as state-certified instructors, to make sure the highways are safe, and especially to make sure our children are safe in our school buses. That is our primary goal. And I've been doing that for the last 16 years, of those 16 years, 15 here. My question is, how we provide FATE, which is a free and appropriate public education to our children, it should be important that we should also provide that to our employees, but I consider a fair and appropriate public employment. Our employees, classified employees, also deserve to be promoted into a position. My question is, since 2012, when the old supervisor, Kevin Humphrey, and some of you might remember Kevin Humphrey, he retired, I've applied for the position for Transportation supervisor four times. Four times, of those four times, I've only received one interview. I was eligible to apply for it the other three times, but I was turned down because I was told I did not have two years in a supervisory capacity. What I do for these people is, in fact, a supervisory capacity, because I take care of them. I make sure that they're valid. I make sure that they're trained properly and they're safe on the highway. That's my main goal, and I've been doing that for 16 years. Well, unfortunately, I understand that last week, they appointed the transportation supervisor, even though I applied four times, and I was turned down on the four times, and the last time, I got an interview. Let me turn to the next page. There has been not too much opportunity to advance in management, especially-
Mr. Hernandez, I'm sorry, your time is up.
I'm sorry, my time is up.
It's three minutes. I'm sorry.
Wow, those three minutes go really fast.
That's why we have the clock over there.
Oh, I was looking at this guy. Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening to me. Okay, thank you.
Next, we have Stacy Magaña.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Magaña. I worked with the district for 13 years, off and on, and I've been in transportation for six years as a sub. I also have applied for the position as a permanent, but was not given the opportunity to test due to being on a medical leave. I would like greatly to work with the district permanently and given a fair opportunity to do so. So, you could please look into what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, the only thing that I wanted to say, and I wanted to speak about her situation too, and she's been here six years, and she's also received no go to get made permanent. What I'm requesting, and I didn't get a chance, and now I know I've got two minutes, is I'm requesting the Board do an investigation of why I was not given the opportunity to promote into a transportation supervisor. I'm bilingual. I speak with the community. Yo hablo español. Yo puedo hablar a la comunidad. If you want the secretary, I could be your secretary. I speak Spanish. I've always worked with the community, no matter what, either English or Spanish, I work with everybody. What I ask the Board is to investigate why. Why did this happen? After so many years working here and not given the opportunity, that just makes me wonder. I gave my dedication, I would like a little bit back. There was a great man by the name of Cesar Chavez, and I'm gonna read a quote that he said, "Once social change begins, it cannot be reversed. You cannot uneducate the person who has learned to read. You cannot humiliate the person who feels pride. You cannot oppress the people who are not afraid of you." Cesar Chavez said that. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Mirna Ruiz.
Good evening, Board, President O'Kelly, and Dr. Avila. Today, I'm here to say thank you for hiring Dr. Chavez at Carter High School. I think this is one of the first times that I am like super happy, you know, that we have such a person here in the district. There's had been many of issues and incidents, and some of them personal to me with my own kids, and I brought them up to her attention, and literally within two days, and probably would have been the next day because it was a weekend, they were taken care of. So, I'm here to say thank you. I know she's probably gone already, but I just want to say thank you to her for doing that. And also, going back to Peach Jar, changing it really quick, and promoting Colb Middle School, we are gonna be doing a fundraiser, and it's shoe drive, and you guys will be getting that, we have our secretary here from PTA from Colb, and Daphne Hawkins. And so, we're gonna be sending those flyers, so please go home and look in your closet and all those shoes that you do not want, please bring them to Colb. We're gonna be collecting shoes until October 12th. So, or call me, I'll come and pick them up. You don't even have to drive over there. You know, just bring them in, in a bag, and I'll pick them up. And like I said, this is for a great cost for Colb. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all.
Okay, we move on with public comments on agenda items. Any person wishing to speak on any item on the agenda will be granted three minutes. Do we have any, Dr. Avila?
We do not.
Okay. So, we're gonna move on with comments from association executive board members, Rialto Education Association. Is, oh, there she is, okay.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Lisa Lindberg, President of the Rialto Education Association. I just would like to thank the Board and Dr. Avila for your leadership and guidance in our negotiation settlement. We're very pleased. I don't think either side got everything they wanted, but that's how it is, and we'll be back to the drawing board next year. But I wanted to make sure and thank you for that. And I'm a little out of breath, I ran. I do want to make one comment about the hiring of, and I'll call it outsourcing, because that's what I call it, the counseling group. And I will disagree with the Assistant Principal at Warner, Dr. Balagun. I think our counselors are quite capable. In fact, some of them are trained in crisis intervention. So, I do think they are quite capable of helping our children. I just think we need more of them. So, I would, as I see more and more of these outside agencies coming in, my hope is that you'll remember our people and hire more of our people. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a representative from the California School Employees Association, CSEA, who wants to speak tonight? No? Okay. Communication Workers of America, CWA?
Not here.
Nobody? And the Rialto School Managers Association, R S M A?
He's going like this.
I missed that, Mr. Harris.
I'm blaming him with the cabinet.
All right, thank you. All right, we now go on with comments from the superintendent.
Thank you, President O'Kelly, and I'm still trying to recover from our earlier event, just being wowed by the number of people who shared in such an amazing and historic event. And so, we saw quite a bit of history today, but in doing so, we were also part of the history. So, I encourage everyone listening, those who are here and those who are watching, especially our teachers and our students, to be trailblazers, trendsetters, and be the architects of your own stories. But be bold, for he who is not courageous enough to take risk will accomplish nothing in life. That's Muhammad Ali. And be excellent at it for what you do. We are exactly what we repeatedly do. Excellence, then, is not a knack, but a habit. That's from Aristotle. And so, let it be clear that an ounce of practice is worth more than tons of preaching. That's from Gandhi. And as you shape your story, let us read and dance, for these are two amusements that will never do any harm to the world. That's from Boltear. Thank you.
Is that all? Okay, moving on with comments from members of the Board, and we are going to start with our wonderful student board member.
Thank you, President O'Kelly. Last week was a very exciting week for me. Last week was the first day of DSAC. I got to meet with a lot of the members from all of the schools. It was nice meeting all of them and knowing their names and just getting a feel of how the year will play out, and looking forward to how everything is going to be. Friday was our robbery game against Rialto. I want to congratulate Rialto, because they played a lot, they played a lot better than I was expecting them to, and-
But Eisenhower still won.
Yes, I'll leave it at that.
Save it for him.
I'll leave it at that. They played a lot better than I was expecting them to, so I want to congratulate them on that. And the preparation for the game was very intense, so the week was very hectic for me. Yesterday was the Ucan College Fair. I think that was my first college fair I've ever been to. One of the counselors that I know well, he told me it wasn't one of the best, but just for me going and getting experience and seeing colleges and getting a feel of how like this is like really coming to me, it's almost time for me to go to college and things like that. It was a great experience, and with today being the 125th anniversary of the school district, I want to say that I'm very proud to be a part of something like that. It seems like it's set a lot of things up for me, so I'm really proud to say I'm a part of something like this, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ayala.
Well, thank you, President O'Kelly, and good evening, staff and community. What tonight was, was absolutely spectacular. You know, 125 years of history, and you know, couldn't be prouder to be part of that event tonight, and wanted to start with that comment. You know, I want to say thank you to all the dignitaries, the staff, and the community at large for participating. That was a full house, standing room only. It's often said that, you know, if you don't know where you came from, how can anybody expect for you to know where you're going? So, what we did tonight was go over a little bit of history. But, you know, with this in mind, you know, we gotta find out what's important to teach our children. And I know there's the ABCs, there's the academics, but I want to bring to your attention tonight that our kids are evaluating us, whether you're a parent or a teacher, on a daily basis. They're watching our behavior. They're watching the way we communicate. They're watching the tolerance we have for life. And I'm hearing comments tonight, words like restorative justice, trauma therapy, and broken homes. This is a reality. This is a reality. Fifty percent of the households end up in divorce, and if our kids are caught in between those types of traumas, how can we expect them to function in school? So, you know, we gotta find, deep within ourselves, to look for opportunities to look for these signs of despair with our kids. And a good way to do this, and I've said this before, is plan at least a family dinner with your children. Cook up something special, and designate a certain night of the week that you're gonna have dinner. Everybody's required to participate. Are we asking too much for one night a week? Use those opportunities to study the behavior of the children, try to hear what their concerns And a lot of times, we don't even realize what we're doing, because there's this one huge emotion that most of us, it's a horrible emotion when it's misunderstood, and it's under the term called jealousy. And when we're raising our children, two, three, four of them, they know who the favorite is. And if you're not that favorite, you start to fade out. You start to feel like you're not part of the group. Same thing as a teacher. When all those kids in the front row are clapping, and the ones in the back are not being paid attention to, you gotta find ways to rotate the seats, include people. You know, it's not easy, but it's gotta start somewhere. So, at home, maybe it starts with a family dinner. At school, maybe it starts right after the pledge allegiance. You say something, just a few words, or you put some posters up or something. But, and then, this is a message out to the fathers out there. The best love that you can ever give to your children, and that is to love their mother. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Montes.
Thank you, President O'Kelly. I just too, just want to, well, first, let me just say, good evening, buenas noches. And I do want to piggyback on what Dr. Avila was saying about the earlier event, the 125th anniversary. Wow. I can't pronounce the appropriate word, but is it quasentennial?
Quasi-centennial, I think.
Quasi, quasi-centennial. Sounds funny, but 125 years is a good run, and I think in those 125 years, a lot of history, good and not so good, have come about, but what matters is where we are today. Like our fellow board member, Mr. Ayala says, "Well, the past is water under the bridge." And it is, the past is the past. All we can do is worry about today and where we're going, moving forward. So, I want to thank everybody, not just on this Board, but everybody in this district, because at the end of the day, all of us that are still here, all of us that are still working towards making this district a better place to, not just to work, but a better place to serve this community, is really what's gonna make the difference. All of the great people that have served this district, all of the living legends, they've already done what they could, and it's a lot, but they look towards us now to take the torch from here, and hopefully for us to get that torch as far as we can, and really brighten up the road for a lot of our kids. So, I want to thank everybody that participated, all of the dignitaries, our mayor, Deborah Robertson, all of the people, I believe, I seen Hardy Brown Jr. from the County Board of Education here in San Bernardino County, Mr. Alejandro, Dr. Alejandro, and everybody else who came out tonight. Thank you for making it more special for us. And again, thank the staff. I mean, this wouldn't be a district without the employees, so thank all of you. I do want to just say to the gentleman who came to address the Board regarding some concerns, regarding promotions, I appreciate what he had to say, and whenever somebody, whenever an employee comes up to share their concerns with the Board on whatever issue, it takes a lot of bravery, and I just appreciate everybody that comes up, whether they're employee, parent, or student, and shares any concerns that they have with us. So, thank you for doing that. The last thing I wanted to say is regarding the parent summit, Mrs. Bailey came up and encouraged everyone to participate. People who haven't gone, to go. I have to say, the parent summit is one of the, I think, one of the best community engagements or parent engagement events that we can do. I look forward this year to not trying to hurt all the parents to classes or hurt them like students, to where we want them to go. I hope that this year, we can do, you know, a little bit like we've done in the past, and just allow parents the opportunity, the choice to attend the workshops if they choose to, but if they choose to socialize and be entertained out in, you know, in the open quad, then they should have their right to. And with that, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montes. Okay, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, President O'Kelly. Tonight, as usual, I'm talking about STEM, but I'm going to focus on the certificates. There is a STEM ladder, as I call it, the Ladder of STEM Success, which is a certificate and associate- an associate's, then a bachelor's degree, and you can go further if you choose to. But just today, before, as I was preparing for this board meeting, I was reading from Georgetown Center for Education and Education and Work. Certificates can outperform two-year and four-year degrees. Twenty-four percent of female certificate holders earn more than women with a bachelor's degree. That was actually a shock to me. Certificates are a gateway to gain full employment and college degrees. Certificates are the fastest-growing post-secondary credential in the United States. Certificates have grown because they are affordable, usually take less than a year to complete, and often yield high returns in the job market. Certificates have become a stepping stone to college degrees. For some, they stop at the certificate, but I totally encourage in this job climate and the future to go on and get a college degree. Twenty percent of certificate holders go on to get that two-year degree and additional thirteen percent ultimately get a bachelor's degree. Certificate value is tied to being in the right field and time working in that field. The longer you're there, the more you make. The highest earners are those who work in the field and are in high-demand careers. Certificate holders commonly work in allied health, office support, blue collar and cosmetology career fields. Blue collar, office support and IT certificates yield the highest returns in the labor market. Certificates provide higher economic payoff for those with less educational preparation. To translate that, if you're not doing too good in high school right now, plan on a certificate before you go planning on that four-year degree because you're going to need earning power. You're going to learn whether you like the field, you're going to know what to take next, especially if you are a late bloomer in the respect of the field you are interested in. That's when a certificate would really apply. Students who enroll in certificate programs and have lower standardized test scores receive similar wages as workers with some college but no degree. Put another way, whether you're at the top of the class or at the bottom of the class, if it says doctor, it says doctor. So, okay. A little report on our local network readiness as we move towards a bring-your-own-device or a one-to-one. Network readiness by November 1st is what I'm told. This is necessity so we can move to either a bring-your-own-device or a one-to-one. First of all, footsteps of brilliance, which I thank Jasmine Valenzuela for bringing in to our attention, and it's a wonderful program. If you have not seen it, ask about it. You can call the office, you can check my website, joemartinez.org. Bring-your-own-device versus one-to-one, the difference is, bring-your-own-device, whatever students have in their pocket, which is either a tablet, a cell phone, something, they provide the device. Chances are, they've got one. A one-to-one is a district provides the device, all similar. There's a big difference, cost-wise, there's a big difference, one-to-one. If they are tested on the device, they're already accustomed to the device. So, you know, students do better if they are accustomed to that device. So if you give them a new one, it can throw them for a loop. And to make sure that there are no further delays, I've waited eight years, as many of you have, eleven board policy templates have been forwarded to the superintendent's office to disseminate as he sees fit. So, you know, I heard, well, there's board policies. Well, luckily, online, there's a lot of board policies. Okay. Speaking from Leadership Primer of Cole and Powell, Lesson 15, The Forty/Seventy Rule. Part one, use a formula where P is equal forty to seventy, in which P stands for the probability of success, and the numbers indicate the percentage of information required. Part two, once the information is in the forty to seventy percent range, go with your gut. We're in about eighty or ninety percent range on STEM. So we are way past the forty percent range where we should have been moving. No fault to any one individual, but we're going to get there. Powell's advice is, don't take action if you have only enough information to give you less than a forty percent chance of being right, but don't wait until you have enough facts to be a hundred percent sure, because by then, it is almost always too late. His instinct is right. Today, excessive delays in the name of information gathering needs analysis paralysis. Procrastination in the name of reducing risk actually increases risk. I leave you with a few quotes. "The task of the leader is to get their people from where they are to where they have not been," Henry Kissinger. "Don't follow the crowd, let the crowd follow you," Margaret Thatcher. And the greatest leader is not necessarily the one who does the greatest thing. He is the one that gets the people to do the greatest thing, Ronald Reagan. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Walker.
Good evening. I just want to share that I was able to attend the Ucan Conference at Carter High School yesterday as well. I was really excited about the opportunity for our students and our families. I think I saw a lot more parents there with their students this year, which is a great thing, so they can help them to navigate through the college applications and talking to the recruiters. And I just, the comment you made, Juan, about your advisor, somebody saying that it was better before or whatever, I saw, because I've been there for the last three years, I saw this year it being more productive for the seniors in particular, because it wasn't overcrowded with other kids, you know, or our younger, our underclassmen who still want information, but the seniors weren't able to get to the recruiters and do their applications and everything. So we did have a great opportunity for students to actually complete applications, get decisions done, get application fees waived, which is so critical when any, basically every application at the minimum is at least twenty dollars. So you figure if a kid is applying to ten schools, that's two hundred dollars off the top. And so just to have that opportunity within our district and be able to get it to our students and our families is a great thing. So I'm excited about what happened yesterday. Even my daughter participated, and she was accepted to over fifteen colleges yesterday and offered almost forty thousand dollars in scholarship money. So unfortunately, it's not the school she wants to go to. But, you know, we still got a long time to convince her. But just to say, the opportunities that are there, because you never know what's going to happen by the time the springtime rolls out, because things always change, but us being able to give that opportunity to our students and our families, I want to thank again Rialto staff for making that happen. The next thing is just, I am elated as well about being a part of the 125th anniversary for Rialto Unified. So, you know, I wasn't able to see what happened at the beginning of the one-year anniversary. Thank goodness, or I'd be like, what? This would be a movie when I'm 125 years old. It would be a movie, wouldn't be reality. But even opening that time capsule was really kind of odd to me, because I thought about it, I said, time capsule? And I'm thinking, we're going to dig in the ground and go get this thing. And it was just sitting there, and we just, okay, we're going to open it. And I don't know why, because I've been watching too many movies, that I thought, you know, something like a space, you know, a silver titanium capsule, we're gonna, you know? And I was like, oh, it's just a wooden box, you know? Okay, and it's like kid stuff. And I realized, when he pulled out the floppy disk, and I realized, this is from 1991, I was still in college, I hadn't finished college yet, and computers were using those floppy disks, and I was still saying, I don't want to use that thing, because I can't see all on the green screen, and I'm using that word processor. And I just, it took me back to that time about how many things have changed. That was 25 years ago. Just to understand that the history that we've had and everybody that's gone into building and putting into that history, the time capsule and everything else, just tonight was just a great experience and for all the legends that we were able to honor. Thank you all for including them and remembering the legacy that they've left for our district and the beauty of which we do our events. Just reminded me of when we were inducted, when we got elected, and our celebration, kind of our swearing-in ceremony, and the food and the decorations, and I was like, Rialto does it big, you know? So just excited about how we welcome our community as well. So thank you, Rialto, and I thank everybody for the 125 years and still glad to be a part of this board.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Well, thank you all for either being here or watching us on TV tonight. I want, I was so proud to receive some news about a week or so ago that I wanted to share with you, that one of our own Rialto High School students, Abigail Quaylar, published a paper with Dr. Brian Wong from UC Riverside in the Journal of Physical Chemistry, which is one of the premier science journals, you know, in the country or in the world, I'm not sure, but for a high school student to be published in a scientific journal is amazing. And we will be seeing her at a later board meeting, but I wanted to point that out. I was so proud, and it's a huge accomplishment for a high school student. Our students and our alumni continue to amaze me with their outstanding accomplishments in all areas. Our district has produced, when I was principal at Eisenhower, we had our 50th anniversary, and I had to plan and execute the 50th anniversary celebration. And the alumni were, my phone was ringing off the hook, and with people wanting to recognize this person and that person for their accomplishments, because we were starting a Hall of Fame and things like that, and it was just, you know, it's amazing, the people who have come out of Rialto. Our district has produced numerous professional athletes, including, well, Eisenhower alone has a minimum of twelve that I know of, and four of them are Hall of Fame NFL players, which, I mean, the whole state of Maine has zero Hall of Fame players, and Eisenhower High School has four, so that is pretty impressive. And Rialto High School, which of course opened much later than Eisenhower, has six that were, well, ours were in football, Eisenhower's were in football, golf, wrestling, I think, there was a couple others. Rialto highs were primarily Major League Baseball players. I mean, we've got just a wealth of athletic talent there. In addition, I'm just naming a few. We have had film directors, actors, Silicon Valley executives, doctors, surgeons, fashion designers, teachers, administrators, musicians, business executives, business owners, scientists, policemen, firemen, many people in Rialto that, this is one thing I love, many of our students still serve Rialto as policemen, firemen, teachers in the school district, administrators. It's amazing the number of people who love this community, and this is where they wanted to spend their careers. We have one sitting right out there, Ms. MacGyver Brown. And it's just, our students have worked hard to be successful, and they represent Rialto well. To say anything else is to degrade our students. I am proud of all of their accomplishments, and I wish them all the success they dream of as they pursue their dreams. I attended, okay, what was that? Oh, I, well, I participated with a booth at the Rialto Family Festival last Saturday. Hopefully, a lot of people were there. It was a lot of fun. It became very hot, but it was a lot of fun, and I saw a lot of people that I had not seen for a long time, so that was a great experience. And of course, today, we were at the 125th anniversary celebration, and I was doing the math, and I realized the district was eighty-nine years old when I came, so kind of puts it in perspective. It was a wonderful event, and I mean, it just brought back a lot of memories and a lot of history and, you know, the people that I saw that I had not seen for a long time. It was very, very touching and very wonderful. Our five living legends were so deserving of those awards and have brought so much to our district, and we honor them and thank them for that. And that's basically all that I have, so now it's time to move on with the agenda, get to the business of the day. Okay. We move on with public hearing, and there is none. Consent calendar items, all items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by the Board of Education members or the superintendent for individual action. Do I have a motion to approve consent calendar items, reference E through J?
So moved.
Second.
Preferential vote by a student board member?
Aye.
And by, vote by board members, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And so that gets us over to J. K, I'm sorry. Discussion action items. Number one, approve resolution number sixteen dash seventeen dash twelve, supporting Proposition 51, Kindergarten Through Community College Public Education Facilities Bond Act of 2016, reference K.1, 1.1 to 1.3. Does, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then next, approve the recommendations of the administrative hearing panel, administrative hearing case number sixteen dash seventeen dash four, stipulated case number sixteen dash seventeen dash six. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Preferential.
Is there a second?
Second.
And before we adjourn our school board meeting, please, I want to read this first. Please assist me with a moment of silence for Mr. Bill F. Clinton, who worked as an avid tutor at Cole Middle School from November 2000 to June 2006. Mr. Clinton, who was an active community leader and child advocate, was best known as serving as a lieutenant governor of the Kiwanis Club, an organization that he began serving in in the 1970s. He passed on September 6, 2016, at the age of eighty-three. Mr. Clinton's memorial services were held last Friday. He is survived by three children. Mr. Clinton's wife, Mrs. Diane Clinton, a former teacher of forty-two years at the district, also passed years ago. The district's thoughts are with the Clinton children in their time of great loss. Let's please bow our heads for a motion, moment of silence. Okay, we had a motion and a second to adjourn. I need a preferential vote from our student board member?
Aye.
And a vote by board members?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.